Good evening and welcome to the November 20th Board of Education meeting. I am Kevin Collier, the chairman, to my left is Mr. Jeff Ramsey, he is the vice chair, and I'm going to let the board introduce them and announce their township, it will start to my right.
East Southway Township.
Cherry Street Sheriff.
Katherine Roberts Dallas Township.
Doc Guthrie Gastonwood Township.
Your turn, Brian.
Brian Moore County Mountain Township.
Doc Cherry, at large, member.
Thank you, and on behalf of the board, I'd like to welcome everyone here and those that are watching by internet or TV during this season of Thanksgiving, I'm thankful for each of you and everything that you do on the school board, all my colleagues on the board, we do a lot of work, a lot of good things for Gaston County schools, and it's an honor to work with each and every one of you, and I want to thank you for all the work that you've done, and thank our staff for all their work, who make our schools safe and a wonderful climate for children to learn. Our next order of business is our invocation, Ms. Guthrie.
Let us pray. Gracious Father, our hearts are filled with Thanksgiving this evening, for once again you have allowed us to assemble together to plan for children in Gaston County schools. We ask, dear Father, that you bless the Board of Education, please continue to give us the insight and the wisdom that we need in order to lead this county. We ask that you bless the superintendent and his cabinet, so that they will be able to share their knowledge and experience with the teachers in the schools in Gaston County. We thank you, dear Father, for the many boys and girls, the young people who enter through the doors of our schools in Gaston County every day, we thank thee, dear Father, for their efforts, we thank thee for the presence that we see tonight, because they are here to display their talent and their gifts. We thank thee, dear Father, for every teacher in our district, and oh, Father, the parents, thank you for parents that support their children, and thank you for the parents that reach out every day to children. We pray and ask that you will continue to bless this district and our community, Father, those without children, who are concerned about the children in Gaston County, bless them, Father. We just ask that you bless everyone during this Thanksgiving season, we will forever give your name the praise, the honor, and glory that it needs. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. Mr. Booker, we have a special pledge of allegiance.
We do, we have a lot of special things to begin our meeting with tonight, and it is a pleasure to have with us this evening two groups representing Hunter Huss High School, the chorus directed by Ms. Jacqueline Robinson, and also the Army Junior ROTC under the instruction of Colonel Reginald Spivey. You all will recall, we had our September meeting located at Hunter Huss, and the hurricane Irma was projected to cause damage in Gaston County, and we sent the children home that night, so we're fortunate to have them back with us this evening. And so, once the chorus gets set up, we will have the junior ROTC come in and present the colors, so if you'll all join me in rising.
Other arms, hold, left, face, freeze in, arms.
If you'll join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty as its throne.
Order, arms, right, face, forward, march.
Thank you so much to the junior ROTC for bringing home that, we have a lot to be thankful for, and think of all the men and women serving our country, not only in the United States, but across all nations for us, so it's nice to have that special touch tonight. We're also fortunate to have with us Ms. Robinson and her great chorus, and so I will turn it over to her.
Good evening, we are a small ensemble from Hunter Huss High School Chorus, under the direction of Ms. Jacqueline P. Robinson.
Our percussionists for the night are Eugene Maddox, Tyrone McCollum, and Edwin Vargas, under the direction of Ms. Watson Leary, Hunter Huss Band Director.
The first selection we will be singing is, the title is Sila Lisa, Hearing, by Jim Popovich.
The selection Sila Lisa uses languages, uses both languages, Swahili and Spanish. The primary meaning of Sila Lisa is listening, hearing, and standing strong.
Sila Lisa, hear me.
Kusiki alisa, I listen.
Pa moja, together.
Sila Lisa moyo, in your heart.
Ikusiki awewe, I hear you.
Katika moyo wako, in your heart.
Nina ja, I'm hungry for listening.
Nina ku, I'm thirsty for listening.
Pa moja, together.
To na wesa, we can.
Our second selection will be Imagine, by John Lennon, pay close attention to the words.
Sila Lisa, kusiki alisa, sila Lisa, pa moja, sila Lisa, kusiki alisa, sila Lisa moyo, sila Lisa, kusiki alisa, sila Lisa, pa moja, sila Lisa, kusiki alisa, sila Lisa moyo, kusiki awewe, weka moja, katika moyo wako.
Mama ye.
Kusiki awewe, weka moja, katika moyo wako.
Mama ye.
Kusiki awewe, weka moja, katika moyo wako.
Mama ye.
Nina ja, ni na ku, pa moja, to na wesa.
Ikusiki awewe.
Nina ja, ni na ku, pa moja. Pa moja, pa moja, pa moja, pa moja, eh, kusiki awewe, weka moja, katika moyo wako.
Mama ye.
Kusiki awewe, weka moja, katika moyo wako.
Ikusiki awewe.
Rumba.
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 Ikusiki awewe.
Two weeks ago, Highland was in the national spotlight in Washington, DC. They were accepting the 2017 National Blue Ribbon School Award. Highland is one of only six schools in North Carolina to receive this award, and one of only 342 in the entire country to be named a National Blue Ribbon School. This is the most significant award the Department of Education will bestow on any school. Highland received this award for its consistent commitment to high academic standards and outstanding student performance. As you all know, the school's 100% graduation rate, its A-plus performance grade on the state accountability program, that included having no achievement gap among students, are all factors that contribute to Highland's selection as a National Blue Ribbon School. Ms. McLean, Ms. McLean has the award, sorry. She's clean to. She has the award with her, and we would like to share it with the board and everyone with us this evening, and those watching on television, to recognize that this is the National Blue Ribbon School for 2017.
Well, this was great pride that I get to. First of all, congratulations, it's a tremendous honor. But also, I'd be remiss if I did not mention the students that show up at your school and the rest of your faculty and staff. That is a great group that you put together over there, that they've made our county proud. We're glad that you're leaders for us. So on behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like, I know this is a big look because this is the biggest plaque. But this is a National Blue Ribbon School, congratulations, and we're so very, very proud of all of you, your students and all of your teachers. We'll give that to Ms. Webb. She looks so pretty on TV. I'll go behind y'all. Get over next to me, y'all.
And the school will be having a great celebration tomorrow morning to recognize this. Now, it is a pleasure to recognize an outstanding student, Rachel Dewey. Rachel is a member of our Gaston Early College student body, and she is one of the outstanding students in our school system. If you don't believe me, did any of you get 800 on your SAT? She scored an 800 on the reading and writing section of the SAT. One that not many people get to say they were a part of doing. She is also a member of the Beta Club and has served as a junior marshal. She is also a leader in the Venturing CoEd Program for teenagers that's sponsored by Boy Scouts of America. She plans to attend UNC Chapel Hill to complete her degree. Hear me, complete her degree, because she'll already receive a degree from Gaston College, and she will be majoring in accounting. We want to congratulate you for your perfect score, and we thank you for your commitment to outstanding academics.
Rachel. I am so proud to have the opportunity to present this to you. You know, I love to read, too. But to make a perfect score, that is just awesome. And we need to give her another round. On behalf of our board chair, we would like, and the board, we would like to present this to you, Rachel Dewey. Last name is Dewey, like the Dewey Decimal System. SAT, perfect score, reading and writing section. We congratulate you, and we want you to know that we are very proud of you. And as the song said earlier, a dreamer, you continue to be a dreamer. You're doing extraordinary well. Thank you very much.
I believe Ms. Wyatt is here, and any of her family that would like to come forward to join Ms. Guthrie for some pictures? Thank you again for being with us tonight. Next, it's a pleasure to have someone with a crown here, I believe. Marissa Garrison, would you please come up? She is a student at Stuart W. Kramer High School, but she is the current Miss North Carolina Outstanding Teen for 2017. She won the, she won the state pageant in June and represented us in the National Miss America's Outstanding Teen Pageant this summer in Orlando, Florida. She's already been making many public appearances across the state promoting her community service program, which is Destiny Lives On Foundation, that focuses on the importance of organ donations. Just this weekend, she was on live television in Raleigh, participating in their Christmas parade. She is the third Gaston County student to win the Miss North Carolina Outstanding Teen Pageant. We had previous winners in 2005 and 2008. So it goes to show, many of our students here in our high schools do great community service, as well as participate in outstanding events. We congratulate you, Marissa, and extend our best wishes to you as you continue to represent us across the state of North Carolina.
Marissa, we're really proud of you. There's a big tradition in Gaston County, they carry a crown home. For outstanding achievement, Miss North Carolina Outstanding Teen 2017, signed by Kevin Carter and Mr. Booker, our superintendent. We're really proud of that.
Thank you so much.
I think, I think there's a number of people, Mr. Ramsey, that could join her. Ms. Vines is here, if anybody of her family would like to join. Mr. Chair, I have two more items of good news. One that Mr. Higgins doesn't even know, this is one that is very important to everyone that sits on this board and our entire community. I received a letter today, and I just wanted to read it. The cross-program consolidated monitoring review that occurred for your district has concluded. Gaston County Schools has successfully met all statutory compliance requirements in the review conducted by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction that incurred on November 16th. Included in that review were the following programs. This is what's so important for you all to know. They came in Title I, Part A, Title I, Part D, Title II, Part A, Title III, Part A, Title IV, Part A, our migrant education program, our rural and low-income schools, as well as our small rural school achievement. We were commended for working closely with the DPI Program Administrator to meet all applicable federal program requirements in our district. That is millions of dollars and thousands of children served, and Dr. Buck Knight and her team are to be commended. That is a three-day turnaround on that, it's awesome.
Lots of record people. Yes, yes, yes. Great.
Yeah, they're not too forgiving of a misspelled word or a add, number added wrong, so that's great news. I wanted to conclude tonight by recognizing the Board of Education. Last year, you received the Gold Bell Award, which is presented by the North Carolina Board Association, that recognizes your investment in your training and being prepared to be board members. You have been recognized again this year for all of you meeting the requirements, and then as a board meeting. And so, on behalf of the Board of Education, Mr. Ramsey's there, and Mr. Higgins is going to present that, who is the chairman of the NC SPRO agreement, that's right? So we want to just acknowledge all the hard work that you all have done, doing those numerous webinars and attending conferences. So thank you for what you do to be prepared as board members.
Mr. Booker, I'd just like to personally thank each and every board member for their commitment. And that just shows each, every individual on this board, their commitment for being a good board member and serving this community and the children of our county. And you've heard me say this story many times, I've been on this board, but I don't think I've seen this happen in my entire stay on this board, where every member meets this criteria two years in a row. So thank you, thank you.
She's the one that reminds us every time, click on it. And we really appreciate Dana's pushing us to do this, it is a big war force. On behalf of board, I'm glad we finally got to do it right.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes good news for tonight.
The next item on the agenda is public expression. I need to read the rules for public expression before we begin. Citizens wishing to make comment and who have completed a request to speak for them will be recognized by the chair and then requested to step to the microphone for their comments. The microphone right here beside Mr. Dedman. Citizens will state their name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes. The members of the board do not respond to public expression during public expression. Public expression does not allow for comments on confidential or personnel matters. The chair shall rule on all points of order during public expression. The first person I have signed up is Mr. Charles W. Reed.
Reed, I alumni, may I have her to go before we get to sign?
Yes, sir, she has signed up, and we will hear from Ms. Joanne Holmes.
I am a dreamer. But I want you to know, I'm not the only one, I'm the whole one. And so today...
Ms. Holmes, I need your name and address for the record, please.
I am Joanne Boens Holmes. I am the president of the Reed High School Alumni Association, and my address is 6527 Heatherbrook Avenue, Charlotte, North Carolina. I was reared in Belmont, North Carolina. I have property in Belmont, North Carolina, and it looks like I lived most of my life in Belmont, North Carolina. But I do thank you for this opportunity to come before you today. I am an alumnus of Reed High School. That school stood in Belmont, North Carolina. I am also the president, right now, of the Reed High School Alumni Association. Reed High was closed in 1966. And if I get here, it's because we loved that school. It was totally demolished in 1968. So as alumni, we have no physical building. Everything is in our memory and in our hearts. This place where we were given an excellent education is physically gone. So this year, we are carrying it in our heart to celebrate 100 years of Reed High School. So we are here talking to you about the centennial, the 100 years of the school without walls. Our celebration day is Labor Day weekend, September 1st, 2018. However, our plans include celebrations every month in 2018 until our final celebration in September. We invite you to be a part of this celebration. The class of 1956, the Reed High Alumni and Belmont City Council placed a commemorative marker at the intersection of Psycho Street and Cedar Street to just denote that a school ever sat on that hill. While I come today inviting you to be an integral part, we're not quite sure how we want you to do that. I hope you give money. But we also would need speakers to come and share in the many activities that will be ongoing. We will send you another invitation, this is just to let you know what our plans are right now. My major request is that you partner with Belmont in placing a building to be known as the Reed Community Center for this commemorative celebration of 100 years. This building would also serve to educate children and adults, as well as serve as a gathering place in the community and for the Alumni Association. The community deserves an educational facility. We do hope that you will consider being a part of this great and grand commemorative time for us. It hurts to not have a building to go to, not even to celebrate 100 years. We have the marker, but that's just not enough. So for this wonderful anniversary of 100 years, just remember, we do not have a place to gather. We have no place to hang our centennial banners unless you allow us to hang it here. We have no place to celebrate. Help us to build this building that we can call home. And we do hope that maybe you will be as swift to do this deed as it was to tear down our building. God bless you, and we hope to see you again. Thank you, I have copies for you, and I do have pictures of the commemorative marker. I don't know how I do this, do I just hand it to you? All right.
Give those to Mr. Dedman and Ms. Holmes, thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to have this time.
All right, our next speaker is Mr. Charles W. Reed.
I'm going to ask my brother to come up and pass out information to you. I have my brother Oscar Reed, if he would. And I think we have enough copies for the persons at the table below as well. Greetings to the Gaston County Board of Education and all present. I am Charles Wesley Reed, I reside at 149 Pearl Hand Drive, Belmont, North Carolina. I am the grandson of the late Professor Charles Jesse Bynum Reed, the founder of Reed School, and his wife, my grandmother, Mrs. Maude Herndon Reed. I am also the chairperson of the Charles Jesse Bynum Reed Foundation and a proud Reed School Alumni Member, Reed High Class of 1969 honorary, also proud actual graduate of Belmont Senior High School, 1969. If there is any school that served a whole, almost, of all Gaston County, it is Reed School, which encompass grades I through 12. The towns and areas Reed School served consist of the following, in alphabetical order. Belmont, Cramerton, Gastonia, specifically the Neely's Grove and Bradford Heights communities and others, Lowell, McCaddonville, Mount Holly, Ranlo, Stanley, and even communities right next to the South Carolina border, perhaps even located in South Carolina. In recognition of the evolutionary journey of Reed High School, 1918 to 2018, 100 years, we ask that you allow, that you follow along with us as I read from the third page within the material that you have. If you would turn to the third page of the printed material you have been given, and I'm reading from it. Reading, Remembering Reed High School, the three Rs. Reed High Service Project. Introduction. We used to sing the song "School Days" that spoke of the three Rs. Note below. "School Days" is an American popular song, written in 1907 by Will Cobb and Gus Edwards. Its subject is of a mature couple looking back sentimentally on their childhood together in primary school. The best-known part of the song is its chorus. "School Days, School Days, dear old golden rule days, reading and writing and arithmetic, taught to the tune of the hickory stick. You were my queen in Calico, and I was your bashful barefoot beau. And you wrote on my slate, 'I love you, Joe,' when we were a couple of kids." The Reed High School Alumni Association proposed sponsoring our three Rs, with the R noted as now indicated, reading, remembering Reed High School, the three Rs. Proposal. Obtain endorsement and support of the Gaston County School Board for the Reed High School Alumni to use February. for the Reed High School Alumni to use February, Black History Month, as a time when the Reed Alumni will read stories in as many elementary schools and perhaps daycares we can. We would also show a few pictures of and tell a little about Reed High. We will work in conjunction with the Gaston County Schools. This project will be spearheaded by the Reed High Class of 1969 honorary. In closing, let us know who would be our contact person with Gaston County Schools, if approved. Thank you. And inside of the material that you have are pictures of Reed High School and also pictures of my grandfather, the founding principal of Reed School, Professor Charles Jesse Bynum Reed, and also some of the students. Thank you very much for this time to address the Gaston County School Board.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Someone will be in touch from staff within the next week after Thanksgiving, most likely. All right, the next act, next item is an action item, approval and correction of the minutes for our September 11, 2017 meeting. I need a motion and a second. Motion by Ms. Cherry, second by Mr. Ramsey. All those in favor, show by raising your hand. Mr. Moore, if you'll say yes or no to approval of the minutes? Yes, it's unanimous. Next item is an information item, Classroom Moment. Dr. Baughnite.
Good evening, Chairman Collier, Superintendent Booker, and board members. I'm excited tonight to share one of our great teachers in Gaston County from South Point High School. I'd also like to welcome Mr. Montgomery up, and I will let him actually introduce the team. We have students with us tonight as well. I think you'll be quite pleased at what we want to share with you tonight, what is happening great in our schools in Gaston County.
Thank you, Dr. Baughnite. Chairman Collier, Superintendent Booker, we are excited and honored tonight to be able to showcase some of the great things that's connecting professional development to classroom practice. And with that, we have an excellent teacher from South Point, Mrs. Trimnall, who is one of our great science teachers. And she has two students, an outstanding senior, Abby Sanders, and one of our outstanding juniors, Bailey Phillips. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Trimnall.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us. Over the past year and a half, I've had the opportunity to attend some professional development. That's really changed the way that I've approached some assignments and topics in my classroom. And I've been wanting to give my students the more opportunities to display their skills as opposed to just getting all their information from me and doing what I say every minute, which they're good at. But I wanted to give them some more opportunities. I call this "The Road to Making Thinking Visible." It was an idea that was put forth to us a little over a year ago by Dr. by Allan November. He told us that it was important to strike a balance between empowering the students to own more of their own learning while the teacher directs the flow of learning. And we all know how much it means to us if we can grab ownership of it and if we can show it to others. And that's really what I wanted to display today and have an opportunity for these young ladies to really show you how they've shined this semester. I wanted to start by making learning personal in my classroom. And I had an amazing opportunity to attend some professional development just this summer in Boston. And I was able to learn sketchnoting from an international speaker on sketchnoting. And she actually illustrated what you're looking at here. And she taught me that even though I don't really believe in my power to sketchnote, although I try, in my own journal, that I don't display, but that I can teach that to others and allow them to blossom. And I was able to do that. And I looked at some of the data, and I looked at a meta-analysis that talked about the most effective notes highlighting overall framework for the lecture, but embellished that with critical specifics. And that's fancy talk for get the information and really grapple with it, highlight it, sketch it, doodle it, color it, whatever makes you look at it over and over again. And that's what my students are starting to do. They're looking at their notes more than the time that they wrote it down. And I let this, my students do this. This is what it looks like in my classroom about twice a week. And as soon as I began, they just took off. And it's really fun just to see them really getting out all their supplies to really get into this. And so I thought the best way to show you this is to show you this. I'm going to clap because that was Bailey Phillips here, drawing out one of my notes that I had given her. I had given her a bunch of words. And that's what she made from the words that I had given her. And I'm just, I'm very proud of what my students have produced and displayed. So I brought some with you. I do want these back because I want to keep them forever. But I would love to pass those around. I'm really, you know, just really proud of what they've been able to produce. And the music and editing, I'm going to talk about in just a moment as well. Now, I am going to take some credit because I held iPad over her for 20 minutes while she did that beautiful artwork. So I'm going to take that. But this is from my biology class. These are a couple of my upperclassmen. But this on the screen is some ninth and 10th grade work as well. It is across the board. It's not just an upper-class production that we're seeing. And if you don't see the graffiti art in the one on the left, that is talking about eukaryotic cells versus prokaryotic cells. It is pretty awesome to watch these students' minds work and to watch this being made. So that is one aspect of some PD that I had learned, that I had brought into the classroom. Another aspect I want to show you next is giving the students an opportunity to share their work. They will perform bigger and better than you can ever imagine if you allow them to share their work with other students and other people in their community. So I challenged them to make a digital awareness campaign about the harmful effects of underage drinking and alcohol consumption. And I told them, I do not care what you do. I just want to see a great product. And I had to have, you know, these couple of points in there. And you're going to show it. And whoever is the best, we're going to show it to the whole school. I put this one up there because one group was like, the best way to get to the school is going on Instagram. I said, you are probably right. I don't know what, how to do that. They know how to do that. So one of my students made an Instagram page about Shattered Dreams and put some notes up there about alcohol and the physiology of it, how it works in the body, how it's toxic to your body, and what can happen if you drink too much. And then it was also focused on drinking and driving. Okay? The next one is another production of these two students together, and it's just a one-minute clip of what they gave us.
High schoolers tend to think that drinking is all fun and games until someone gets hurt. The Shattered Dreams Project is a movement to get high schoolers to know the dangers of alcohol consumption. While under the influence, do not get behind the wheel and end someone's life as well as your own. 1.4% of adults report driving after drinking too much. 2015 Belmont had 21 alcohol-related crashes. Gaston County had 10 fatal alcohol crashes and 269 total alcohol-related crashes. Between 2011 and 2015, North Carolina had an average of 362 fatal alcohol crashes. Also, North Carolina had an average of 10,996 alcohol-related crashes and 8,487 injuries. Alcohol crashes represent 4.1% of all reported car crashes in North Carolina. Alcohol-related crashes make up 22.2% of teen driving fatalities. In 2015, drivers between the ages of 15 and 19 were involved in 1,194 alcohol-related crashes with 18 fatalities. This is real.
And that was Abby Sanders here. And that was another thing that came out of this that I did not expect. Students taking videos. I offered them to do videos, but then they edited them. They added music. They added voice. They cropped. They moved pictures around. I was just really overjoyed at how much effort they put into this and hours that they put into this and the teamwork that it took to do videos that I would be proud to put on YouTube. I would be proud to display. So I'm really proud of them. I do think, from the conversations I've had with them, that this is leaking into their other classes. And they can share a bit more about that with you if you'd like that. But I'm just really happy about getting this information, getting this power into the kids' hands and letting them shine. So that's all I have for you.
Does the board have any questions? Mr. Howell.
As a former football player in high school, this whole doodle concept of learning is not new to me because they would say, the fullback smashes around to the tight end. And we would draw arrows and numbers and pictures. And so with that, it's awesome to see that you take something that not only are you able to use, but you're able to get the students to embrace. And I'm assuming that it's been reflective in the whole school, therefore, South Point did so well in football because the football players are able to illustrate that better.
Well, I knew when I came here, I needed a way to get them focused in the classroom.
Right.
So it just seemed to work.
Yeah, so awesome job. Great job, girls.
Ms. Guthrie.
I am so impressed by what I've seen tonight. The first thing you said, or maybe the second, you said that you wanted your students to own their own learning. You have given them that opportunity by using those strategies in the classroom. Also, just like the publishers always create graphic novels to get students to read more, this has done, in the classroom, what the publishers want our kids to do when they read, young people. And I am just thrilled. I saw more than just one genre being used there. You were using art, your art techniques as well. And you were using your research skills as well because you talked about alcohol. And that was something that you were interested in. So you did your research for documentation there. So I applaud you. I just think it's wonderful. And to get our high school students to be so engaged to produce such information, just keep up the good work, girls. And you are excited about it. So that's why I see the contagious, it's contagious there. Thank you.
Mr. Ramsey.
Would students like to make a few comments once you thought about the new program or anything?
I did the videos. I'm not that good at sketchnoting, but I love doing the videos. It's kind of a way for me to put my voice out there in my opinion. And I kind of take over when I do it. I just think it's a great way to learn. And it sticks in my head a lot better because I have to write it out and record it and then voice over it again. And I want it to look the best, so I want to know what I'm talking about. I can use a great word.
I also enjoy it. I think it helps me take home the concepts better. I have to actually like process and think about things in a different way than put them into pictures or even connect like whenever I'm using different materials, not just like my pencil and paper. I have to think about how things connect and pick out like the important things. It really helps me learn things better.
Ms. Cherry.
I would assume that you're seeing improvement in test scores, too.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes, that's fantastic.
Thank you very much. It's really impressive. And keep up the great work. Mr. Montgomery.
While they're setting up, Mr. Chairman, when you hear her talk about Dr. November, this is a program that we started two summers ago with a cohort, and we added a cohort this past summer. So you'll see this work going on throughout our county with teachers at every high school. Mr. Ford, thank you for joining your team tonight.
Absolutely.
All right, the next item is K-3 classroom size waiver. This is an action item. Mr. Booker.
Yes, members of the board, you all are familiar with K-3 class size. And we talked about it at our work session. We're given the right to request a waiver related to all of our enhancement classes. And you see listed there in your board item, that includes the art, dance, music, theater, PE, health programs that are offered in our K-3 classes. We do not have any that are not in compliance, to our knowledge, but we will not meet again to, if it occurred, and this is a no-harm waiver that we can fill out. And so I'm asking for your authorization for the chairman to sign off with me to request this waiver.
I need a motion and a second. Motion by Mr. Dedman, second by Ms. Guthrie. Questions, comments? Ms. Cherry.
Do we have any idea how this is going to impact us next year because of this debate?
Yes, ma'am. This year, to comply with the phase N, we had to hire over nine teachers related. Next year, we project it will take us somewhere between 27 and 31 teachers to meet, based on this year's enrollment. We have been working with our principals and already have assessed. Dr. Hushard, Dr. Baughnite have gone around assessing. And we believe with the majority of our facilities, we've also started permitting the movement of some mobile units in anticipation of the challenges we might have. So physically, we think we can handle it. The big challenge will be trying to find 30 additional elementary teachers. You all recall in our report that we gave you, we have over 25 lateral entry elementary teachers this year. So the challenge of doing it, and recognizing all the districts across North Carolina will be facing these kind of numbers.
Mr. Dedman.
Mr. Booker, will those be extra allotments from our local or from state? Hopefully, state.
No, sir. The state has said that those allotments already exist and that we need to adhere based on that. What they are looking at is, and that's part of why you saw the move you just did, they are looking at our enhancement teachers and saying those allotments would need to be addressed. They have not released what that formula would be, and they're collecting this data. We had to return a report in this past Friday talking about our vacancies and people we had in temporary positions.
So we could theoretically lose some teachers.
Well, you wouldn't lose teachers. It'll be teaching positions moved from one area to the other. Yes, sir. And Dr. Maddox and her team have already been looking at everybody's licensure and trying to line up what we have and know what our strength is of people who could work in multiple positions.
So the letter of intent, like to return, are those letters, would they help you to determine how many positions you have or need to fill?
Well, what we have done, and through you all's support, and it's great to have Fun Bounce that allows us to do this, we have been offering early contracts to people. We already have seven early contracts executed for people to hopefully start in January when they complete their student teaching. And we will continue. We have a job fair. We have a job fair in December that will be out recruiting people and we'll offer early contracts at that point. So that's where we're working.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, show by raising your hand. Mr. Moore, yes or no? That's yes, it is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
The next item is Career and Technical Education Business Advisory Council Policy. This is an action item. Dr. Bocknight.
This is another one where our board gets a lot of credit. You all already had a form of this committee and so you're just having to formalize that and that's what this policy represents.
Yes, sir. On November the 6th, we presented the general statute to the board at the regular work session and we shared information, for example, that this process or this policy will formalize terms of four years, three years and two years. And we also will work with our business community and the superintendent to identify those folks. As Mr. Booker pointed out, we already have members of a CTE oversight committee that we think can transition to this committee. I would like to bring this back after this is approved as an action item in December with the actual names of the committee members. And if you'll remember in Mr. Buchanan's last presentation, the community college president, for example, has to be a part of this group, the superintendent, our CTE director and also a high school principal. So we have half of the committee already identified and the rest, we believe, can come from our CTE oversight committee that already exists. So you all were forward-thinking and having this as we were working on our CTE across the district. So I believe this formalizes our process as required by the state and this is an action item.
I need a motion. So moved by Mr. Ushry, second by Mr. Ramsey. Discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, show by raising your hand. Mr. Moore, yes or no?
Yes.
Yes, it is unanimous.
Thank you, Dr. Bocknight.
Next item is policy revisions, policy 7100 and policy 7105. We had our first reading at our meeting in the last work session and this is an action item. I'll need a motion and a second. Motion by Ms. Cherry, second by Mr. Ramsey. Discussion or questions?
Just like last time, I just don't think this is a thing to do and I wish our whole board would vote against it, but I don't think you will, but I wished you would. But I think it's the right thing to let our people have. I don't think we need to have the nepotism policy in there. So that's just my belief.
Anyone else? Comments? Mr. Howell.
Without rehashing the last board meeting, I will second Mr. Dedman's comments that if we're going to be fair and consistent across the board with our policy, it's either an all nepotism policy or a no nepotism policy when it comes to volunteers. Either they can do the athletics and do the band and do the choir or chorus and do the academics or they can't do any of it. I wish the board would change their decision on it, but I'm like, Mr. Dedman, I don't believe it will.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor for the policy, show by raising your hand. That's one, two, three, four, five. Mr. Moore, yes or no?
Yes.
That's six, four. Those against, show by raising your hand. And that's three against. Motion carries, six to three. Next item is Board Policy Updates. This is information. Ms. McGraw.
It's that time of year again, Mr. Carter, but we have received updates based on action by the General Assembly and the State Board of Education and so our policies need to change to reflect those revisions. As is our custom, we have placed those revisions on our Gaston County Schools webpage for viewing by the general public, also for viewing by this board. If you have questions or concerns about those, please feel free to reach out to me or to a member of the staff who has reviewed those policies and they have been reviewed by cabinet members, by staff and are then now presented for your consideration. They'll come back before you at your next board meeting for action.
Are there any questions about the policies? Mr. Dedman.
I'm just curious, Ms. Attorney, do we have many public input on those?
We know of how much we have received. Comment about them, but they're there for the public's consideration as well.
And we did announce the last time that they were there for the public to look at those policies if they were interested.
That is, that's correct. And there's a policy update tab under the Board of Education on our webpage on the online.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move to the next item, which is our consent agenda. This is an action item. I'll need a motion and a second. Motion by Ms. Cherry, second by Mr. Ushry. Any discussion or comments on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, show by raising your hand. And Mr. Moore, yes or no?
Yes.
Yes, and it makes that unanimous. Superintendent, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I wanted to highlight again our excellent KIA Outstanding Educator Award Ceremony that was held last Thursday. I was very pleased with the ceremony, all the work that Mr. Haggins and his team, but I think John Stone, who is a language arts teacher at Stanley Middle School, walked out a lot happier than I because he was named the KIA Outstanding Educator for 2017 and he won a new KIA Rea from KIA of Gastonia. And the impressive thing for us as a district is this is the fifth year that KIA has done that, which means they have donated over $100,000 to our educators. And they have done that with great enthusiasm. Mr. Chris Hafer, who is the owner of the dealership, along with Ruben Jones and Ken Myers and their whole team, really are committed to Gaston County Schools and supporting us. And it's a great annual employee recognition program and we hope they'll continue that great partnership. Also would like to congratulate Vespmer City High School. If you didn't see, they are our lone team still remaining in the state football playoffs. It was a very exciting win Friday night over Swain County and they will travel to Mount Airy this Friday night. This is the first trip to the third round for Vespmer City since 1994 and it's the first 11-win season in school history. So we wanted to congratulate them and recognize how well things are going at Vespmer City and we wish them good luck in their quest for a state playoff championship. Tomorrow, as I've mentioned, we'll have the celebration at Highland in the morning, but also at noon, we're going to have a great celebration at Webb Street. The Community Foundation will present a check for $30,000 to be used towards the school's effort to place a new playground there. And this is an all-inclusive playground and in Kelly House Research, there is not one of these anywhere in our county. And so they are working to raise hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's almost $300,000 it will take to do this. So that is at noon tomorrow and you're all invited to attend. Wanted to highlight another great event that goes on in Gaston County Schools every year and that's our Thanksgiving lunch in our school cafeterias. On Wednesday, over 4,580 Thanksgiving meals were served at our middle and high schools. And then on Thursday, 14,352 meals were served at our elementary schools. So to Frank Fields and his team, we express our sincere appreciation. That is one of the events, Mr. Ushry, you can attest as an elementary principal, how that just fills up the parking lots and you have to draw lotteries on who can come and all those great things. It is just a neat thing to remember Thanksgiving and make it very memorable in our schools. But it's hard to believe that it is Thanksgiving. It seems like we were just starting school. And this short week for us means that students will be in school tomorrow, but they are off Wednesday and it's an annual leave day for staff on Wednesday and a holiday for all staff on Thursday and Friday. So I know that you all will join me in wishing everyone in our community a happy Thanksgiving. And we recognize that we have a lot to be thankful for. And it's not just Thanksgiving week. We pause to do that, but every week we have a lot. We are a county that has given a lot of great things to do and we have children doing, as you've seen tonight, phenomenal things and educators dedicated to them. So we should be thankful every day for that. And Mr. Chairman, that concludes my comments.
Okay. Mr. Howell.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a statement I'd like to make real quick before we go into closed session if we're doing that. Chair McCall, your fellow Board of Education member, serving on the Gaston County Board of Education, for the past six years has been an honor of mine. In 2012 and then again in 2014, the citizens of Gaston County placed their trust in me as an elected official of their public education system. I have worked hard to be a productive member of this board, both in this room and the community. I've had the distinct joy and honor of serving amazing students and their families that fill the classrooms of our schools. I have watched in awe as year after year, our administrators, educators and staff pour their lives into these same students and families. For years, it has been a misperception of mine that those that work in our schools are like the rest of the world. They come in and just do a job. During my time on the Board of Education, I have come to a deeper understanding of what working in public education means. It is a calling, a longing to serve those in our community by giving them the educational tools to succeed in life. I know it is a calling because many of our educators are underpaid, understaffed, underappreciated and many times misunderstood. For many of us in this community, we would not do what the classroom teacher does for what they do it for. I have also come to the realization of the importance of the governing body for local public schools. It is a position that requires a passion for public education, a desire to see effective processes and policies implemented and the necessity to ask good questions. To serve on this board, in my opinion, should be an aspiration of many in our county. Sadly, many election cycles come and go where these nine seats are only sought by a few. My challenge to the citizens of this county would be to refrain from complaining about what should or should not be done and become an agent for change by running for this elected board. My challenge for this board would be to remember why you sit here. It is because the majority of the voting population of Gaston County saw in you the ability to make sound decisions, ask great questions, challenge the status quo and do what is right for the students and families of our communities. Remember the words of 1 Peter 4:10, "As each one has received a special gift, employ it in serving one another as good stewards of the manifold grace of God." In closing, I would like to announce that I have been offered and accepted a new ministry position in the Wilmington, North Carolina area. I will be resigning my seat as the South Point Township Representative to the Board of Education effective December 30, 2017. My prayer for Mr. Booker is that you continue to be the effective, godly leader that you have proven to be and that the staff of Gaston County Schools always remembers to love the students first.
Thank you, Mr. Howell. I'll just go ahead and say that I wish you the greatest success and best fortune and may the Lord bless you in your next, in your calling, sir. Meetings next month, I'll go ahead and tell you, I've talked with staff, with the holiday schedule, we're going to combine the meetings in December to one meeting and that will be December the 11th. Everybody can mark their calendars. I'll make sure Dana updates our calendar and everybody that we're going to meet the same time, 5:30, December the 11th, and it'll be the only meeting we'll have in December.
Here, right?
Yes, sir. Here at Oceola. And with that, I need a motion to go into a closed session under North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, following paragraphs, A3 for consultation with attorney, paragraph A6 for personnel and paragraph A8 for school safety plans. Motion by Mr. Dedman, second by Ms. Cherry. All those in favor, show by raising your hand. Mr. Moore, yes or no?
Yes.
Yes, and we're going into closed session. Yes, and we're going into closed session.[726.82]